Good evening. My name is Matt Wallace, Scottsville Town Administrator. And we're now viewing the town of Scottsville's work session recording for the town council work session, Monday, December 13th, 2021. This meeting is held in compliance with Virginia Freedom of Information Act, open meeting laws, and the town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-19 emergency. The public has several opportunities to view and participate in tonight's meeting. We're open to the public at the town office, 401 Valley Street. We also have options to participate by telephone and online through our Zoom stream. This meeting is also recorded and archived on the town's YouTube page. Thank you for your participation. If you're viewing in the future on the recording, thank you. The local time here now is 12 minutes until 7:00 o'clock. We're still getting our room set up and our farm in order. So I'll mute this line and close the video while we get ready. And if you skip ahead on the recording 12 minutes, you'll see us come to work. Thank you so much. Hey, Thomas?
Hello.
Hey, I need you on setup here, sorry. I'm using that new PC setup that we've got.
Yes.
And did you figure out how to detect the spider microphone for the table?
No, we used the microphone built into the camera for our ARB group.
Okay. Okay. Figure that out next minute. That's my microphone. Can I take a look at this with me? So you're good, the connections, the connections, right?
Yes.
Okay. The connections there. Okay. There we go. That's it, Thomas.
Excellent. Sorry, I couldn't be more helpful.
You are good. All right. Could I trouble you for a sound check? A sound check for Thomas's benefit? Yeah, just see if he can hear you from there.
He sounds a bit far off.
That's what my wife says all the time.
All right.
Matt, tap a microphone. Let's just check which one we're using here. Okay, I cannot hear that, so.
Are you, so how about, how about now? Do you have to pick up here?
Yes, I can hear you there.
Okay. I'm good. No, I saw, I saw Jen over the weekend, of course, but I have not heard from Stuart.
Go ahead and start work session. Items on the agenda today. Nice to have spectators in the audience who do the work session. But it is a work session. It's not a public comments session. It's, you're certainly welcome to think about questions for next week when we have a public comment session. We'll start off with our chief, police chief Gary. Come on up and give us your report, please, sir. Welcome to sit right up here.
You have Coffee vs. Jacksonville. Matt also has a date. And it says our corporate section is covered. That's not a type of my part of the part of the shack that I like to run past. It appears we have more salt services. We have, we have off-martini rolls. It worked out well, of course, because after Bernetti interrupted, we'll take the test of an auto on Saturday. So being an off-the-peak headlock test incidents as far as larceny and things like that this month. So taking advantage of the fall. We haven't had any incidents whatsoever from any of the outdoor events that Matt has coordinated with the agency. So that's good. I don't think that there, I don't foresee any issue with that. Case of stuffs and testing.
Do you see an area in the town where it's most important to be given that idea of police presence? I think what he just said in terms of the proactive.
Probably Main Street. So the vehicle that somebody took, believe it or not, it was a rundown vehicle. What happens is we have so much traffic going through Scottville. And like I said last month, that most of the issues that we're facing are not from our citizens. They're people that are on first. So we have thousands of people coming through today. They see something like, and this is not a common thing. See a vehicle leaving, they'll be able to visit their neighbors. Grabbing it, parting out. So then you have chance, I'd see something looking for it, you know, they have to be here. They get it where it may rise. When your neighbors know you, your dogs might be trying to do this. So the Main Street shopping center, who went through this area, it's a small panel. It is only five minutes away.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
One for me, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate all you've been doing for us.
Thank you.
Be safe.
I'll just report for the Chamber of Commerce, just to say that the Fourth of December event that encompassed the whole town with the chamber and scan and the town. It was just culminating in the Christmas tree lighting. It was just really a great day for the town. There were about 4,000 people estimated to have come through that day. And of course, one of those being Santa and a lot of children, you know, a lot of children, a lot of just nice family relations going on that Saturday. So it was a real plus for the, for the town. ARB, Mr. Bullock.
Sure. A few items here. We were able to sort of move forward on outstanding COA that we've had outstanding, sometimes retroactive work on offense with 385 Harris's Street. They submitted samples of paint. The ARB's request was to get a quote for a wrought iron railing to at least continue around the corner just as a price point, because we do ask that all applicants at least provide materials because we know what we're talking about, property owners about price and design and all those things. The cost of a wrought iron fence was fairly prohibitive, even for a fairly short distance. And so we felt that the next best option would be to paint or stain the fence a black color, very dark color, and then also add some landscaping to break it up, just sort of visually, especially since there's been so much landscaping lost over there, weather related and otherwise. The property owners were agreeable to that. They sent some samples of stains and paints, or stains rather, but they were not at the meeting. So we could not officially approve the stain. But we did make a recommendation for a flat black stain. So it's still, it's still, it's still the stain in terms of maintenance, but it's flat black. So there's no grain, just, you know, I think that will fit best. And then in the interest of being nimble, we wanted to communicate to the property owners that if they were ready to move forward with that staining and wanted to paint sooner rather than later, that we could meet sooner just to approve it. And we'd be happy to meet digitally, you know, meet in the Zoom because it would be a short meeting, but that would be the only item. But if not, then we're happy to just move it on to January and approve it then. So that's one item. Second, we are, we're prepared to move forward with a nomination for one of our vacancies now, too. And this one, we interviewed Mr. John Rhett, who's a licensed architect. We've been trying to actively recruit an architect in the ARB. A, so that we can satisfy requirements to become a certified local government in the state of Virginia. They require a licensed architect on the board, but also because the, someone with an eye towards historic architecture and design has been wanted by the ARB. Simply because when we meet with property owners about historic properties, where we have design guidelines that are pretty good, but we don't have like all the ins and outs of historic character and design. We don't know all the styles, for example, or, you know, how to match them up with modern materials or with what property owners want to do to update or improve their buildings. He brings that expertise and is very excited about working with us. He's worked on a number of ARBs of different types, different communities, HOAs and otherwise. So he has a lot of different experience in that regard and is willing to put in the time. He spoke very particularly about how to maintain historic character of our buildings, which is obviously our number one mission, but also how to implement design principles so that if things need to be updated, because you can't find old materials, they just don't do it that way anymore. Ways that you can integrate those things while still keeping the building intact, or at least the character of the building intact. So we're all very excited to interview him and we'd like to move forward his nomination for your consideration and vote at our upcoming public session. So that's John Rhett, that's his website.
And there's still a resident vacancy.
That's right. So that's the other item. We had a vacancy created in early December. And so we're now looking again for someone to fill that vacancy. And this vacancy must be a town resident. And we would prefer it be someone who lives in the historic overlay district. So living in a home that's impacted by our ordinance. I live in a home impacted by our ordinance and it's helpful, I think, to have people on the board who just know it, they know what it's like to live in an old house, knows what the issues are and sort of knows the deal. So, so if you know of anyone who might be interested or has an interest, please forward them along to us. I have some ideas, but you know, the more we can, I think, cultivate some interest, the better for us. And we have 60 days, I think, to fill the vacancy. So ideally, we fill this next vacancy by February. So that's the vacancy issues. What else? Outreach. We're about to do our annual inventory of historic comps and we walk the streets and do a street view evaluation of how properties in town are doing. And in alignment with that, we're also going to be sending around our outreach letters again, both to residents, they'll receive a letter like this, it's very brief. It says you live in the historic overlay district, history is important to Scottsville. Please contact the ARB if you want to do work. We also are going to send up a mock-up of this, not a mock-up, it's this, which is just a small pamphlet which explains what the historic overlay district is, where it is, and what kind of work requires a COA. And again, how to get in touch with the office. And then we'll also be sending around this Realtor letter to local Realtors in the area, especially since there's been a lot of, there've been homes sold in town over the last year, notably. So it's good to inform Realtors, so that when they're talking with people interested in the area, that we encourage them to let them know that they're moving into a historic overlay district. They don't always do that and that creates challenges for us. So this is a way to ensure that's communicated. Matt also had the idea of sending this around basically the same letter to contractors who work in the area a lot. There are some who are just down here more than others. And so if we can send this letter to contractors too, it's something that they can talk with property owners about as well before they start doing work, that they should know to look for a COA from the town that has approved the work before they get started. We actually had a conversation with a guy who works down here a lot too about that as well. He dropped in on a meeting, so we're continuing our outreach. So I think that's, that's part of what we're trying to do, is make sure everybody knows the process, make you involved, they know how to get involved, and they know the importance of the work that we're trying to do. So that's what we are up to now.
Any questions from Mr. Bullock? It appeared that the Methodist Church did something about their fence.
Yeah, they finished it.
And does it, is it now in compliance?
It is now in compliance and I think it looks really good.
Coming off the bridge, you can see it.
I think that's exactly, exactly right. And that's a nice example of a retroactive COA. We issued a stop work order on it. They came to the board, we talked through the design, and we were able to come to an agreement about something that looks historically appropriate for the town. And I think the outcome is really positive, positive work with the church and it looks good on the, on the end. The only other thing I wanted to add, Matt, and this is just follow-up for you, because we also issued a stop work ordinance on the fence on East Main Street. And we didn't have anything from them at the meeting, so.
They, they confirmed with me that that's replacing identical.
Okay.
It had, it had gotten real corroded.
Yes.
And banged up, but they documented well what it was and we'll see the replacement drill exactly.
Okay, same paint and everything? Both was white and yellow. It might be worthwhile if we get in touch with them again to ask about the gutter. Because there's a gutter that's hanging.
I can say something about that.
The front side.
They have gone past the hundreds of miles out in every direction trying to get that gutter.
Yeah.
And they have also contacted all sorts of workers to hang that gutter. No one will touch that gutter. Everybody wants to do the, not fire glass, like vinyl.
Yeah.
Dutters and sub-acts and copper gutter.
Right.
They cannot find it anywhere. And even if they can find it, they cannot find a single person who will even touch it.
Right.
They've been having major issues with that.
Yeah.
I may be able to help you with that. We had, we had our copper dutters replaced on our house last year. They were starting to rust through.
I am driving a blank on the landlord's name. I only know so much, but I have good friends with the person who was living there while the whole thing was, was happening. But yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know if they're still living or not, but I can get to.
Yeah, make the connection. Yeah, and so that may also require a CLA to kind of what they're doing. It'd be good to talk to them anyway, just about the projects. So, yes, that's it for me. Thank you.
Planning Commission did not meet this month, is that correct?
Correct.
Vice Mayor Dan is the council's representative to the Planning Commission. Any, any thoughts on anything at the moment, since there wasn't a meeting and you haven't been able to attend one yet? You're just looking forward to getting into it?
Very much looking forward to it.
Okay, skip on down to Treasurer.
Thank you, sir. I've got, got a few budget notes on towards the end of the meeting. Those are coming up on halfway through our fiscal year. And performing well, seeing transient occupancy tax, meal tax and sales tax, all a little bit above our targets for the year. And so it's mixed national news on everything from inflation to interest rates, local businesses, we seem to be doing well. And we see the benefits of that. Looking forward to new business openings coming soon. That's not something that we bake into our budget. We don't assume any business growth. We just look at who's already here. So any brand openings that we see are always to the group in our budget. Bills paid are on track. We had kind of a burst of project activity at the beginning of this year. We're opening the DMV. That has slowed down a little bit, so it keeps the budget sort of in line. And the town on the whole has taken in a little bit more money than we expect at this point in the fiscal year, which is good news, that does not always happen. The infusion of American Bank Plan cash at the beginning of the year really helps with the town's liquidity. It gives us a much better financial trajectory this year. Let me see. Financial report and audit is the other good news coming this month. The town's financial report for the year ending June 30th arrived today. That's right on time. We handed that report to you and delivered before Christmas each year so that you can see how the town did in the past fiscal year. That audit reports, no concerns and screams. So a real kudos and thank you to Clark Thomas on words and the Academy, their problems on the box. They've come in on August for their good work. Randomly checked the town's deposits and bills paid through the past year and investigates our electronic and paper files. So the thorough work was done quickly and professionally and it sets a good baseline for our finances. That's critical for our safety. That's critical for our safe and comfortable events. Qualifying for that grant funding requires that the audit be uploaded in a time and manner so that those agencies can see what we've been doing in the past. So meeting that part of it is a good, best practice standard that we need to share. But I appreciate Mr. Onsworth and the comments on that.
Anything else? Any questions for Matt on Treasurer's position?
Yep.
All right. All right, my report is, it's been, it's, it doesn't seem like it's been a month since we had our last council meeting, but because we had five Mondays in November, our last council meeting was on the fifteenth and today's thirteenth. So it's been a month since we've met. During that month, I have met with Income Chief Gary to discuss things going on in the town. Just to get a good feel if we have any problems and everything seems to be in pretty good order right now. I think he's doing a really good job. Thursday, Matt and I and Income Chief and incoming Chief Greg will go to the court so Greg can be sworn in as our chief effective January first. And at same meeting, we're going to have, have the court swear in Gary as an officer for the town. So he can be a part-time officer, stay on since he is familiar. He's been really hard, busy updating policies and procedure manuals and things that it wasn't that Chief Jeff neglected them. He just was so overwhelmed with a lot of other paperwork. They sort of just got behind and then it got sort of like hard to catch up with everything else he had to do. So Gary has been in a position and he and Greg have been updating all the policies and procedures to make sure that we will be a fully accredited police department. I had a telephone conversation with Mr. Bowling. I don't know, is he with us this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, we spoke for a while about the next town elections because of the change in the state law, moving everything to November, and that's on the agenda on the new topic. So we'll get into that more in a little bit. Attended the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting and as you said, participated in the December fourth tree lighting and other activities during the day. We had a meeting with our supervisor, Donna Price, after their last board meeting. She brought us up to speed on things in the county. Then I had another nice long hour and a half meeting with Greg and, and Gary. Again, talking about policies, procedures and getting everything up to snuff so that when the, it's time to be accredited, we will pass that accreditation with flying colors. Dan, Vice Mayor Dan and I met for a while the other day to discuss, just discuss upcoming Planning Commission items that will be a focus of some public hearings this month and next month. And Matt is in the process of arranging with the developer a public open house so that he might answer any questions that the public has. And with our January meeting being scheduled for the seventeenth, which is Martin Luther King Day, the January meeting and the two public hearings for Bird Street and Blenheim Road will be on the eighteenth, Tuesday the eighteenth. Hopefully the week before that, sometime around the twelfth, thirteenth, we can have the developer here in this room and open to the public to answer any questions that the public has from that developer and see what kind of changes he's made based on comments from the Planning Commission, comments from Matt and comments from me. So that, that will be properly advertised.
One second. So the, the work session is the eighteenth or the public session?
Public session will be on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
So that'll be a Tuesday rather than Monday. Uh, let's see. Last Wednesday, I guess it was, Stuart and myself and former Mayor Gill and Mrs. Susan Cable did a Zoom meeting with the few that bought Housing Authority. It was really good. I thought it was really good.
Yeah.
We, we covered a lot of topics. We covered the fact that, you know, our seniors down here, the apartments need management at the apartments that cares for them and is concerned about their welfare and will get things done. That seems to be the, the message I was getting from the seniors, of the residents of the apartments I had been talking to. We did a survey, a lot of questions. It was an hour and a half meeting. And the results of that meeting are, did you get the email with that yet?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll forward it to you. We got, I got an email with the results of all of our answers to all of their questions. So I'll get that to Matt and that'll be available if any of the public wishes to, to look at that.
Were they researching anything in particular or was it just like a community checking sort of thing?
It was really sort of, and Stuart can follow up on this, but it was to me, how can we get word out as to what we do? How can we make what we do better? How can we serve the people that need our services? You know, things like that.
Strategic planning.
Yeah, so it was a lot of, a lot of planning in that. So that, that was a really good meeting. And then on the, as I said, on the sixteenth, the day after, let's see, this is coming Thursday is when we'll go to the court for that swearing in. And one thing that, you know, we like to have our town looking nice and I guess maybe some people don't realize this, but it, it doesn't matter who your candidate was in November. November's over and we have an ordinance that says political signs should come down two days after the election. And nobody forces that too, too much, but it is on the books and it should be a courtesy to your neighbor to not have a bunch of signs in the yard, no matter who they're for. I don't care who they're for. But and, and basically, really, the ordinance says they can be put up two weeks ahead of time. And we know they go up two months ahead of time or more. And nobody says anything, but it does kind of make the town look a little, I don't want to use the word trashy, but unkept when you just got signs stuck around. So if, you know, if you want to be a good neighbor or good citizen, just save the sign until next time you need it. So I just wanted to mention that and I'll mention it again next week. And the last thing. It's a sign, some of the sign ordinance, look under section four of the zoning code.
Okay, I understood that. I forgot, is it, is it a town ordinance?
It's a town ordinance, alright. Just like dropping leaflets from an airplane over town is a violation, but.
With the, with the new earlier voting and this past, you know, voting forty-five days of here.
Yeah.
Two months is not out of question.
Well, like I say, nobody ever says anything about putting them up. It's taking them down is the ordinance says. And if just, just to make the town look nicer, again, I say, you know, who, whether you're candidate won or lost, that's not the point. Point is, you got signs of classed as temporary signs and ordinances that come down two days after the event. So.
Well, the same people have, you know, the, the sign up being open, I'm, I'm one of them, I think. It might be the same one that said they walked too early, but we have to change the ordinance to be more in tune with the early voting.
We, something we can certainly look at. And, and I, I actually, I, until I looked at the ordinance closely the other day, I thought it was two weeks afterwards when they had to come down. I didn't realize it was two days. I had misread that somewhere along the line. And if we wanted to extend it to two weeks, that's fine too, but they can't, they shouldn't stay up forever.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, so. The other thing, and it's, and we'll get to it down under carryover topics, parking. There is, I love ordinances. You ought to go through the ordinance book. There is an ordinance that says the mayor can put up signs about parking. So if I deem a spot should be a two-hour parking spot, I can put a sign up on that. That's probably not going to happen, but what I would like to do, if it's okay with everybody in walking around town, just make notes about where I think certain time limits should be on parking spaces. You know, we had all this a number of years ago, Dan probably remembers when we had people parking overnight in the lot. We had people parking, say, well, they're, they live in the apartments next door. They were parking on Valley Street. We had people complaining because they were parking on, picking space on Valley Street. So, and then we have cars like the, the chief had, even the one that was almost stolen, been sitting there. And you would appreciate this, the grill had been knocked out. He had two lanterns, once you corded to the space where the grill was supposed to be. And I guess that was his headlights. So whoever would have stolen it wouldn't have gotten much anyhow. But you know, that, it, it's just, we can do a lot of things to, to, you know, improve the looks of the town and make her, and try to make, make it even better than it is already. So that's my, my report. Any, any question? Now you say Mr. Bowling's on the air.
Yes, he is. I'm here, sir.
Hey, Mr. Bowling.
How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Fine. You got any words of wisdom for us?
Well, I wish, but I've been working with Gary as you've already discussed. And he's, I think the town is, is very fortunate to have Gary and also the new, soon to be chief. But Gary's really taken the bull by the horns and been dealing with some, can only be described as tedious requirements of going through the town's very lengthy police manual and trying to whip it into shape. And to give you some background, the, the town, you, you can have, you can have a, a code service or somebody provide you for a manual for fifteen thousand dollars. And the, Jeff in his wisdom just said, well, I'm going to adopt Albor County's manual. So at least we have something on the books and I'm, I'm kind of a, at the, at the time, I was an absolute believer on that because he didn't have the staff or the time to go out and really develop a full manual. But there's a lot of places that don't really fit. It's a round peg in a square hole and vice versa. And so Gary has gone through that process and, and started to bring it more into conformity to a, 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 a small police department like the town has. So I'm, I'm grateful for him doing that and I hope the town council members will be grateful. And I've enjoyed working with him so far and I look forward to working with the new chief. I'm happy to report that this Thursday, if the, the signs align with the town, we'll get a fourteen or eighteen acres, eighteen acres, I guess it is, of floodplain for it to be used as a, to extend its, its recreation and park system and trail system. We're supposed to close with Dr. Hurt on that. This, this Thursday is what we're shooting for if everything works out. So that's going smoothly and Matt has been a big help. Basically, the document that you approved, oh, when was it? Back in, it was back in the summer. It's, it's still substantially the same document. We've taken a couple of the contract provisions and put them in the deed of easement, but they don't change what the council looked at and authorized to enter into back in the meeting when they approved that. So I've been pleased with that process. And then I have been talking to you, sir, about the election change, which I gather didn't, didn't sit very well with a lot of towns in Virginia because they had a tradition of doing things and it was a nice little way to do it. It was a town election that didn't get involved with all the other hubbub of, of the general election process, but the General Assembly has spoken and I don't think there's anything the town can do about that. That's, that's the gist of my report. For, for tonight, I've got some comments when you get to your special use permits this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Bo, yeah, go right ahead.
Mr. Bowling, when you say on that election front, is there, you're, you're simply saying that all the town can do is align with it?
Well, yes, I mean, you, you, you've, you've got an eight hundred pound gorilla, actually weighs more than eight hundred pounds when you're in the state of Commonwealth of Virginia in the General Assembly. And they said you shall have an election in November. And you can go ahead and have an election in May, but the problem with doing that is first person that comes along who doesn't like whatever the town council majority of a duly constituted quorum decides is appropriate is going to come and challenge that. You, you have to, the election laws.
But if they, if they say it has to be in November, do we have to do anything? I mean, is it just going to move to November?
Well, again, the, the border elections wants to see authority when they carry out their election process. Elections, which you may have noticed in reading the newspapers, listening to the various media that's, that now exists, have gotten to be pretty important. So you always want to dot your i's and cross your t's. And so, but because of this, the state election board is, is insisting that everybody pass an ordinance if they're not in conformity with the November election date. And I think that makes sense.
So, so just so I say this again.
Doesn't mean I necessarily like it.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just an odd thing. It's changed the law or have your election don't count. I mean, it's, it's, it seems.
Well, you are a creature of the General Assembly. You know, we really, you're, you're a creature of the cost of Commonwealth of Virginia, but the, the constitution's carried out by the General Assembly. Your election laws are set by the General Assembly and so forth and so on. So like it or not, you're stuck with the General Assembly. But I do see where you're coming from.
Any other questions for Mr. Bowling at this point? Okay, we'll get back to you later in the, in the program. Matt, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Stick around.
Just a, a couple more neighborhood updates. Thank you. Again, crediting the Scottsdale Simon to the Garden to make sure for the excellent partnership on a holiday event. The holiday happening on C Center the fourth. Their, their help was tremendous from booking vans to designing brochures and helping to market the event. Those are details that the town has struggled with in the past. Sometimes we plan events and we don't promote them well enough. And it's so encouraging to see a really strong crowd from all over. Old, old friends and new neighbors and tourists from further away on that day for the arts and crafts and the farmers market in Santa Claus. Really strong community partnership and I appreciate the help from the elementary school PTO, but let's association, the community churches. That was a good example of many hands make light work for community events. I think the other news, the mayor and attorney and police chief were touched on. We've had some staff work early to that. And I would like to take this opportunity to, again, credit the excellent, outstanding work of Councilman Tom Onward, who is note taking for his final work session here as he transitions to management and budget job at Admiral County. They're so impressed and proud of the work that he's done. So he's moved the town for the last three and a half years. Come a long way and he's some issues to fill. That recruitment is active now and we're working on it. He's, he's helping in that transition. But I'm proud to help his, his rise in public service here. And I mean, good thanks for that. Thomas, is there anything else you'd like to add here?
Well, just thank you very much. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I'm under the weather today, but I will join you all next week for our last meeting together with me on that side of the table at least. And I'll say a little bit more then, but just thank you all so much is, is the biggest gist of it. I, I so much appreciate the opportunity I've had here and have enjoyed working with each and every one of you. And I, I know I leave the town in, in very good hands. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving into the new topics, go back to Matt. COVID pandemic emergency update.
It's a, it's a strange kind of routine housekeeping that the renewal of our local emergency powers and government ordinance comes up every sixty days.
Time for that.
Of course, we have the, the new news of a more contagious Omicron variant of COVID, which had its first announced case in Virginia recently. The state level device continues to be mass vaccination and booster shots are rolled out for adults and kids is under the spot with any vaccines now. Those are available at the. Um, those are available at the mainstream pharmacy, and I was happy to do that a couple of weeks ago. That went very well, and I even did a little massage on my arms.
The library is gonna be offering shots too.
Yes, they do. The library also has um free test kits. Give them a call if that's something that you that you need, if you're you're concerned about the over the counter price floor, the library has some test kits. So that's uh that's up for council action. Um, it it does look like we're all um we're all here physically uh at the moment. Um, but if you if you need to isolate and quarantine and still participate in town government, it's time to do that. So that's up for your consideration.
Matt, just a question about that. Is. There any conversation in the B M L people related to. How this could be in use after this, after the pandemic? The reason the reason I ask that is as we have. Progressed in technology, this there's a benefit to to be available to people that are out there and are also it can be available to us also that there are times where it's helpful. So I guess that's my question. I know prior to us coming back into this. We were going to allow people to you could do it twice or something like that, and I guess my question is, is there thinking outside? In other jurisdictions about that, how this type of technology might help people in the future or might help us better serve the community?
There there is. I I know there will be bills on that topic. Um, there's many localities that have the same experience we have. I'd be glad to follow those bills and let you know where they stand. As it as it is now, um if we go back to old FOIA, we can still do the virtual participation. Right, Mr. Bowling, if the runs were required by law to be in the room with us, but if a a council member wants to um. Not be in this room for any reason, they can watch from home but not vote. Um, so that's the change that's in effect now. That isn't the case in all. Um, so I'll I'll be glad to watch and stay close hands on that. I know other localities are interested in that.
Because it would make sense. That we consider. I mean, again, it goes both ways, because you want to have public access to what we're doing. On the other hand, there are practical considerations, both whether it's health or whether it's travel or whatever. There's there's reason to have the ability to be. Accessible and it's just an interesting thing to think through. And I in a sense, I'm kind of advocating saying it'd be nice to have this and not be emergency, so to speak, you know, in other words. To have the ability to do it, but not be saying we're under a pandemic emergency. We are simply under a and and it's if we could also, you know, have a. If depending on what people say, you know, whatever is viewed in other jurisdictions. It could also go before the public and people could have input and say, do we like it or not like it, or just to get everybody's view on what's done related to it. I just think it's it opens up a new world. I will tell you in thirty years in the touring industry, my. Use of this type of technology dramatically changed and it's opened a whole new world, which I happen to think it's a good world. But it's a it's a very different way of doing the business I've known for, and so I I just say there are applications to this. We may want to have, for example, that it may be in the future, our fellow town councillors. There's no reason we can't have. Expert opinions on almost anything from somebody anywhere.
Well, you can always be there.
Yeah.
That's um to have a um, you know, a a guest speaker from Montana um joining our meeting.
Could be in China, I mean, it'd be where.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. The difference is when the court calls a roll call vote. Under old law, you all have to be here.
Sure.
And if you're in Montana, you can't vote.
Right, and which is a totally good point, so anyways, it's just it's just. Thinking about how to use the technologies to our advantage to better serve the community, I think is the point, and and what did that what does that mean post pandemic?
Matt, I think this was something that may have been discussed before I come on, so I I just want to clarify what they just say. When you started that. With FOIA, you know. You just participate virtually but not.
Yeah.
Is that with the pandemic now also?
Yes.
So if somebody was quarantined or somebody had COVID. And they were they could not. Vote in a meeting that happened?
That was the that's the old law, and we had a problem in March twenty twenty. We realized we couldn't have a meeting that looked like what we're doing now. But we still needed to do the business of that, and the old Freedom of Information Act required public meeting law required that we be physically present to do the public's business.
But that is not now.
It's unsafe to do that, so this emergency ordinance that we're operating under supersedes that.
Okay, that that's what I wanted to make sure.
Miss Mister Town Administrator, there's a real complexity to that.
Please.
Basically, if the under the old Freedom of Information Act and this and still the Free F F O Y A. Uh, any council member is allowed to be absent for up to two uh two two or three meetings per year. If they have a legitimate excuse that's been voted on, disclosed by the town council member and voted on by the town council before the meeting. For uh providing that the town council member has to be out of town or has to be somewhere else, and then the town council member can participate by telephone. Some for some other electronic means. And that's that's separate and apart from this pandemic Zoom meeting thing that that we're all been uh working with.
All all that to say, simplest answer is, I do think, given all those. Bits and buts, wheres. Continuing what we're doing for another sixty days, when somehow we they're saying we would have to vote on that next week. So it seems to make sense.
I think so.
Any other questions on COVID? Uh, you have told us that the audit was a a good audit that we came through. Uh, also bright side of things. Uh, is there anything uh that you'd like to add to that, or is there any questions for Matt on the audit?
I I emailed it around yesterday. I think we'll get the hard copies in the mail in a couple of days. We'll see you next week.
All right, and is that a document that's open for the public to look at? Should they come by?
Yes, there's a um financial files page on our website and keep the hard copies here.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions on the audit? Uh, back to the November elections.
Okay, um I I've been following the news on this as localities go some different directions on it, so I. Information, let me share a couple of headlines of what some of the options are. Um, localities are struggling with what um. Mister Risco described um of how to react to the state law, which mandates that the localities do something. Um, because it's changing our charter. Our charter says we have no elections, and now the state law says we have to have November elections. So the the cleanest way to tidy this up and follow the state is what uh the town of Montana has done. Where they pass an ordinance saying, okay, we're ready to have November elections, and we want to change our charter. So remember, the town did a charter update recently, changing some other things, keeping the no elections. So Vienna said, okay, we'll change our charter. Um, over in downhill, um, they're gonna.
Matt, if you're if you're screen sharing, that's um not coming up for us.
Is it on screen? Is it the wrong screen? Do you see a difference?
Yes, yeah, I was just seeing your background.
How's that?
Much better.
Okay, thank you. So over over in downhill, they decided not to do the charter change. They're just gonna let their charter language be wrong, because they don't want to do the rigmarole of going to the General Assembly. But they did pass a simple ordinance that says uh we're gonna have our elections in November. So that's what we can do.
And that's okay? Like the charter doesn't have to match the ordinance?
It's okay. The Latin county rush shows it that the the charter can be incorrect and the state law supersedes it. Um, so they can just leave it there as an act.
Didn't we, Matt, didn't you're saying we didn't, the May thing wasn't changed before?
We debated this very issue and council thought about the pros and cons of May and November and decided to stay with that.
So that so the timeframes were changed, but this was.
We changed the term line.
Changed the term. And left the May election.
And then right after we did that, the state said, no, no, we don't want anybody to have no elections anymore.
Isn't there also a factor where if the election takes place in November, it's paid for by the state differently than it is now?
Um, yes, because we'll be we'll be piggybacking on election at the elementary schools that's already happening. So the bill that we used to pay where the registrar has to come here and do a special thing, they don't have to do a special thing anymore.
Maybe maybe the thing to say, going back to Mr. Bowling, is to say, since we really have no choi- I mean, we really have no choice, right? We have to move to November. What's the best option?
There there is a protest option in 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 Daniel, that motion failed, and if um what we'll see what their attorney says, but. They look like they're going to the place where they're gonna have a no election, and the attorney general is gonna say that doesn't count.
Right.
And they're gonna say, yes, it does.
Well, it's not just the attorney general that you have to worry about saying it doesn't count. What you do by doing something like that. Is it anything the town council does in the future is subject to being challenged at any time in the future by any disgruntled citizen who doesn't like what that action is? Because the members who voted for it weren't properly elected. That's your dilemma.
Yeah, I I would.
The attorney general can't resolve that issue. That's gonna be resolved by the court system.
But it it is. It is a a strange piece of state law. Orders that the elections may move and then orders us to pass the ordinance.
You know, again, you might not like it, but it's.
Yeah.
You know, it's 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 actually, you know, it's just the General Assembly makes the laws, and that's the trouble. They also make the charters. A charter is just a special law that only applies to a a city or a town. Or, and you know, there's some other exceptions um that are actually involved out there too for charters, but that's another story.
Any government.
Mister Payne has a question.
Well, no, it's it's just a statement. Um. And of course, I'll everybody out here in this room realizes that that uh our election is gonna be on two ballots. Allen Mall will have a town election and a county. Uh, the Arab people will be elected and then through ballot. And then at some point in time, you'll have two counts and then put them together.
Yes.
So we just it's not just one place, it's two, two counties and one town. Uh, and that's that's the whole. First time around, I guess.
To add one more tier of complexity to this, which, why not, you know, another level of complexity would be. Since. We have a new governor and we're gonna have a new General Assembly, could they change it?
Yes, they could.
Sure.
Could not before our election happens.
Well, that's my question.
We didn't have to follow the proper procedure.
I mean, I mean, I don't know. I don't know how it I don't know to what level it passed. I know that the the obviously the House, the Delawords are gonna be Republican, Senate Democrat, but. Could it pass? I think.
Yes, if they if they really, if enough towns pitch to fit and that law about repeal and it. Was done on an emergency basis, it could be done before May of next year.
You know, I found it pretty ironic that the same legislature last year that passed the law. Giving more power to localities. Then takes away the one thing that is more important than anything. I mean, they just flip flop.
Mister Mister Bowling, if we wait, are we in a rush to do anything?
Well, I mean, you could, I I don't know. I mean, you could just, you can earn the uh dislike of the local board of of elections, which is some kind could be a good thing, but in my opinion. I always like to stay on the good side of of bureaucrats like that. It's health.
Yeah, the the registrar is already planning for next November's election, so things like, what am I gonna put on the ballots that I ranked? You know, he or or how many election officers do I need to vote there? He they they are asking for us.
Well, it costs us nothing to pass an ordinance to align with state law.
Yes.
The the charter is is another extra step, and so they'll let you just like pass an ordinance and leave the charter alone. That way, I don't know if it will reverse, but if it does reverse, then the charter can just like. Keep rolling. I don't know. It seems like the easiest thing for us to do just to align ourselves is that, and if the charter suddenly changes it, then we'll just. But it's bad.
I do think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think I think what you're saying makes sense.
And if you're if you're resisting this imposition in the first place, then you you have your old charter language as a way of saying. This isn't what we want it.
I mean, it's. Given the fact that somebody, I mean, you know, it's like in politics, you have to say, where do we want to spend our time as a town? This is not the battle. I don't think we want to fight it. I mean, i- is it is it a battle worth fighting? Maybe, but. I don't know.
Not if we're the only people, you know, yeah, if we see a large movement within the state, then yeah, we might want to jump on that train.
Yeah, I just think. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's I don't think it's worth a lot of our cycles.
Yeah, I would just go back to your your answer, which is basically create. The ability for us to do it, and we can obviously whatever the General Assembly does.
There are so there there are some short form motions that I've seen examples of that that do it by ordinance and comply with the state law. Is that something you wanted to consider?
That seems to be what people are saying, is that.
Yep, and just leave the charter for the time being.
What do you think, Eddie, or you think you you all okay with that too?
That's good, thank you.
Okay.
That'll process as fast as I used to.
Well, good news, it won't be decided until next week, so you got seven days. Funny way about that.
It is an odd process, whatever you want, whatever you want.
I don't know, it's just my feeling, you know, that. We may as well go along with the state. To one, try it one time, we can always change it the next time.
Yeah.
See what happens.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, oh, they, we decided that um. We would do, we had five public hearings stern down on us. We would do the three minor ones. Next week and get those out of the way, and then do the two major ones in January. So Matt, you want to fill everybody in on the three minor ones we're gonna do next week?
The ones are. Those are on the second full page or exactly for me, so the three similar ones and the two bigger ones that are just ready to change. I think Mission sent out recommendations for all of these, had a couple of meetings that they held in November. So uh for the ones coming up next week, um, two of these come from the staff level, um, from our. Uh zoning update needs and the property master plan, and the other is an application from a property owner. Um, the application is for a zoning map amendment at one five three James River Road, that's um. Uh, James River Road LLC, the Tiger Hills Market property. The. These folks bought a couple of parcels um there in that triangle of land between James River Road, Route Six and Requiem. Um, but they didn't buy the parcels at the same time, so when they first made application for the special use permit, they didn't control the second parcel. So what they have now is a a dog leg from the driveway of the one, which is still some village residential. And their proposed site plan covers the whole site and has split zoning on their property. So they're requesting to make all of their property commercial um and to waive a um buffer restriction on the back line of their lot. Which they also own uh so that they can use more of the site for their uh gas stations and retail outlets.
So is that the is that this part of land that borders Route Twenty?
No, that goes back up to the um old house.
Okay.
At the backside, the other building, it's on the inside.
But we weren't talking about the. Buffer along Valley Street.
Yes.
Yeah, that's that's.
Is that separate?
That's relevant because um rezoning it all to commercial does let their their building shift closer to the road.
Yep.
So they they provided a before and after image of what they originally applied with and the site plan that they're considering more now. And they they are interested in shifting their building um and the gas pumps a little bit closer to Requiem to make more space. Closer to structural steel, um potentially for another commercial building in the future. Um, that's the idea. So they um they've got a presentation on that that I'll represent next next week. Um, but they're they're well committed to the um ARD entrance corridor regulations, and they have some examples of the kind of landscape and signage that they would want to do. But those are obviously the impacts that by rezoning the whole site commercial, it does push that commercial use closer to the road and closer to the houses that are on the other side.
And is that a special use permit, or is that just a rezone?
No, it's a zoning matter.
Okay, and can we can we put conditions on that rezoning? The way that we can with special use permits?
No, the. No, the map amendment stays, um, so that you're just changing the base level. Right now it's village residential and there can't be any commercial signs on it.
Okay.
Um, so if it, if you vote to keep the zoning map of what it is, then you've got this residential buffer.
Yeah.
That they can't use.
Okay.
Um, so they're, they're desirous to use their entire property.
Right.
Um, Matt and I have been up there and walked around on this little strip of land and. Yes, there are several big old trees that need to be saved and we will remind the tiger people that they said they weren't gonna do anything, you know, like cut everything down. But it's a lot of underbrush and just junk growth up there to be made, uh, the whole place could be made to look, look really nice. And still save the old growth trees and just get rid of all this underbrush and plant new trees in there too. So it's, uh, not like they're gonna wanna clear it up. We're, we're not gonna let them clear a whole.
We don't, we can't, well, we can't stop them from doing that once we've rezoned it. We don't, I mean, we, we're, we're still in control of that land by rezoning.
Well, we can remind them, I'll show them in the minutes over.
Well, I, I would, I would say though, that they fall under the ARB's entrance corridor ordinance. So any, any significant changes to that, any changes to that landscape would require approval by the ARB, am I correct?
The, the, yes, the gas station facade itself, what landscaping, the signs, you'll have review on that the same way that you did when, um. Truist Bank is getting a new sign package, didn't look that closely and you even examined the color of the lot. That they did.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you gain or lose anything necessarily, uh, outside of, as Zach mentioned, there's, there's the ARB oversight. Uh, on the entrance corridor regardless of the zoning. As Matt said, you know, the zoning itself will be what, what has some amount of those changes in it. But in terms of what they are allowed to do or, or not do, I mean, they, they said in their first time through that, you know, their, their interest. Uh, of, of getting more visibility to the property, um, you know, they're gonna pursue one way or another, essentially.
Yeah, and that's what concerns me is that the best way to increase visibility of that property is to cut all those trees. You know, they can say whatever they want to now and change the market, but they can't cut them down unless Zach says again.
Well, I, I mean, I know they, you know, they have the entrance corridor and it's under ARB oversight and everything else, but just playing devil's advocate, so is that what it is? You know, so I, I, when you're dealing with these big corporations that just don't care. You know, they say they care, they're gonna do this and it, and then once they're in, we can wrag our finger at them all the while and say, this is under ARB oversight, whatever.
And it's all, you know, it's, I've worked in business and in its, in their business best interest to maximize the visibility of their, of their, uh, business there. So if I was them, I would do anything that I could to maximize that. So I don't think that we can, can rely on their goodwill to continue to do this in the indefinite future.
But, but that's not what's being said by, if it's under the jurisdiction of the ARB, whether it's zone residential or commercial, doesn't amount to deadly squat. It's basically, they still got the right to cut down the tree or not. And if it's in the, if Matt's saying it's in the ARB, under ARB jurisdiction, they have some control over that now, correct?
So a question, so a question for you then, Jim, if they, if it's village residential currently and they can still, and they can still do what they want with the property.
They can cut the tree down right now, tonight.
Right.
Immediately, before we even leave this meeting, that tree could be on the ground. But then why is it on it commercial? Is it just for consistency?
It, it does let the, it lets their gas station be closer to the road.
It, it reduces the, I mean, they, they have currently joined those two pieces as one parcel. So they have a split zone parcel. It cleans up the zoning map, so we don't have two different kinds of zoning applied to one parcel. And presumably it allows them to bring forward a site plan that's more, uh, complete, more holistic, that, you know, takes into account the full property and, and doesn't leave. Uh, off that annex that they can't use. And then as Matt said earlier, by shifting over to the side, they hope in the future that they can create an additional, uh, uh, commercial lot. On the inside of James River Road there, between them and structural steel.
Uh, so Matt, are you showing the current village residential restrictions or commercial?
Yeah, this, this is in the commercial zoning.
Okay.
That your commercial building has to be fifty four, fifty feet away from a residential property. And right now they have a residential property line in the middle of their parcel. So their actual edge of their building is like here. So all of this area is unbuildable for them. By our side. So by, by changing, by getting rid of these lines, they can now put their, uh, structure closer to the road.
Right.
That's what they're doing.
And that's around the top of those trees.
Which is, and whether or not they chucked on the trees, having the, the building close to the road is gonna potentially make it less visually desirable when you come into town.
Yeah.
So, so I don't know, this really probably a question for Mr. Bowling, is, is there anything that we, the town can do to negotiate with them what they do with that land that is?
I mean, there really isn't, cause this, 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 like, you're, 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 you're back, this isn't, zoning has really changed as far as changing zoning goes. You don't have the right to negotiate with a rezoning for, for, uh, this, that, or the other, um, in, in this sort of situation. I mean, I don't see that as this kind of situation. Is it, Matt, at this stage of the game?
I, I, I don't think so. I think the negotiation and problem solving happens at the ARB level of what is appropriate. And if the, if the gas station structure is inappropriate, then ARB can hold that line. With the qualifier that, um, councillor Heinz gave, uh, we, we have to be able to do that diligently and then enforce it.
And we still have to approve their site plan.
But, yeah, but here's, here's one thing, Matt, if you put that back up there again, the, Matt, and this is, I'm actually, I'm, I'm much less concerned about the trees than I am about the houses across the street. And, I mean, the tree is not my voter. I do. I, I do appreciate trees, but at the same time, the way that that hillside is, when you come down, it's relatively steep as you come down. So I guess what I'm more wondering is, the bigger issue is how close is the facility itself to Route twenty? Cause I'm worried about those houses. So, so in other words, forget the trees, I'm worried about, do we make sure that we give enough buffer? So that those residents who live over there, trees or no trees, feel they have that. And so my question is, I'm less worried about, again, get rid of all the trees. I mean, I'm just being extreme. I wanna make sure. And that may be a reason we keep the trees, but the point is, let's make sure that whatever we do, how this is put in. And I will say that's an area, I live across the street from the Dollar General, I still don't like it there. But I didn't stop it, cause I thought I'd be wrong if the town council would do that. But, but that being said, I do wanna protect those people to give them. So this tiger feels coming in, but we should try to give them more distance from their houses. Again, and the tree to me is relevant in that regard, because it does give some more of a buffer. So I think what I would say, going back to you guys with the ARB, is when the building is located, there's signage issues, there's, uh, access issues. There's also the building itself. I think the happy medium is trying to have a position, the building positioned in a way that is not damaging those. The, the quality of life of those people over there.
Let me, um, I guess I'm curious to see their site plans, because I'm also interested to know what additional commercial building they want to put on that lot. Because that, that, the previous site plan submitted was pretty full in between the gas pumps, the building, the car wash.
I mean, wasn't there a Zappo or something?
Small, a small, yeah.
Didn't look like there was a lot more, and it's ultimately, when you drive by, it's actually a fairly small space. Um, so I'd be curious to see what additional building they're just envisioning on that lot.
Yes, so that, that helps you with, uh, questioning for the follow-up. I don't have their file set with me here right now and I, I wouldn't wanna walk through it without, without them hearing what they've gone.
Right.
So let me, let me carry that question over on the spacing and, uh, resend that to you right after this meeting, making sure that I have a more recent version of it.
And Matt, I think it might be helpful. In addition to the ARB's, uh, entrance corridor review that they'll have of the site plan, um, there's a planning commission review component as well. Is that correct? Can you discuss what goes into that a little bit, just so we, you know, can be on the same page about i- if this moves forward as a rezoned lot? What further opportunities for review and, you know, discussion of changes will there be?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good point, because it, it does also get to some of the other, especially use permit issues of what do you, what do you study at the site plan stage? So, um.
Right, we, we said things at the special use permit pro, you know, during the special use permit process that will apply to the final site plan that gets submitted to planning commission. And so, you know, if, if there's a great deal of concern about that buffer along Route twenty. And we said things, uh, about our lighting ordinance or, you know, um, minimizing glare, light pollution, things like, you know, whatever those concerns were. There'd be opportunity to readdress that during the site plan process, correct?
Yeah, let me, uh, let me screen share this, uh, ordinance. These are the site plan standards that planning commission is gonna use. So we're looking at the, how we evaluate them in standards. So there, they will bring a final site plan showing these things, putting importantly, a landscape plan. And then the standards for that are down here. Some of what we're judging, some of what planning commission is judging, is things like adequacy of entrances. So they're, they're measuring returning radiuses and parking spaces. We've talked about this one, that on a fifty unit residential project, there has to be a second road. So that's one of the things that has to be in that setup.
Has to be separate.
A, a second road going in for a fifteen house residential project. Provision being made for sidewalks, um, streets, but drainage from water, water and sewer, fire protection, signs, lighting, landscaping. What are we looking for? The purpose of it, energy conservation, drainage, air quality, minimize glare. Appearance character, value, uh, so those are your standards. And when you have some detail about what goes in it, location of trees. Show these as the building areas, label it all, minimum standards, this is important. They have to label where their new trees are going in. They have to be, um, sizable trees, not, not quicks. Specify the, the species and the health of the tree, how they're planted, like islands, tree trees. We can provide a list of trees that we want, we can specify spacing. So that's what we're gonna judge, but we can't be more strict than this on site.
So, so there's an opportunity to review and discuss these things, a- as Jim said, that doesn't have to rewind the special use permit process on this zoning map amendment. We, we're still moving forward on that special use permit process and have those opportunities coming ahead.
Yeah, but this isn't a special use permit, this is just rezoned.
This is just the zoning map amendment that changes that, that split parcel zoning that they have right now.
Well, then they, oh wait, so then they'd come back with a special use permit?
No, we've already, we've already given them the special use permit to do the drive-through and the gas station and, and those things. But they have to bring forward a site plan as part of that special use permit process, and they haven't done that yet.
Yeah, you get site plan review and you get.
I see, so they, so it will close out the, the special use permit we already approved.
Right, so the zoning map amendment would let them use the parcel to bring forward the site plan that, you know, they've designed.
Got it.
Um, and then that would be the opportunity at planning commission to negotiate that site plan and discuss the concerns of, of the town.
So in between those two red lines is commercial? And from the red line to the road is what they want zones for commercial?
This is pretty, pretty approximate. Right now, this area where the driveway is, is village residential.
Right, and that's what they.
And this is a required setback from that where their building can't be. So under the current law, if you reject this application, the edge of their gas station canopy, like none of their buildings can be past this line. If you approve it, then the whole parcel is commercial and a setback goes from here instead. So it gives them this much extra space for the gas station canopies and lets them put the gas station structure closer to the road.
Significantly closer.
Fifty, sixty feet closer.
Yeah, which is a lot.
It is, yeah.
A lot.
If you, if you know for sure, for sure, that you absolutely don't want the gas station structure to be, I mean, closer to the road than that, that would be a reason to reject this.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was thinking, cause ultimately, one, one thing we have done as council is, is cleaned up zoning.
Yep.
You know, like when a parcel is split or whatever, we have gone through in the last few years and like just made it whole, right? So like just to be consistent, cause it's weird to have a zoning map that has parcels with like multiple zoning there. Um, so on that score, it does make sense to me to just make it all commercial, cause it's not gonna be used for village residential, that twenty fifth strip.
Not for a house.
Right, but it does feel, it feels a little odd that we'd be like, all right, to make it all commercial, but we don't want your building still any closer than it would have been otherwise. So in other words, Tiger Fuel isn't gonna care if we rezone it commercial, if we're ultimately not gonna let them move their building any closer to the road, right?
And, uh, once, is there a rule about the distance that the building has to be from Route twenty? We're looking at it from left to right, now take it right to left. As far as that to be from twenty, the building.
We, we have, we have the rule about fifty feet from the residential property line on the other side. I'm not sure, I'm not sure VDOT has a different standard. Cause yeah, you don't wanna put a building right up against the side of the road or something to come off the, or something.
I mean, this might be a moot point, you know, they may say you can't have anything within seventy-five feet of their right of way and what we're discussing doesn't matter.
It, it might be, and VDOT does have its own rule, which I very much thought that.
So the, the right of way requirement is gonna be a local, of the planning and zoning setback requirement. VDOT will let you have a zero setback on the road.
Okay, okay.
I mean, but then they're governed by your site, sidelines and so forth and so on, that's a separate issue. What's controlling, uh, setback is not VDOT, it's the, um, the, the town of Scottsville and its setback requirements. Whatever they are in their particular zoning districts.
That's true. Part of what we do during site plan though, is give the site plan to the VDOT engineer and say, look at the site plan for us. Do the entrances, um, the parking spaces, the roads, is there any problem with how this property touches VDOT's roads? And VDOT has the opportunity to tell us that. So I don't have to know VDOT's rule. I'll send them the site plan and say, is there?
Well, they've got requirements as to commercial entrances and so forth and so on, which governs how it works and how much turn rates you have in and how long it is and all, and all, and all. Which is traffic related, speed related, and site related, visibility site.
Maybe, maybe the one thing I would say about this is normally, a commercial center is gonna wanna have the most visibility from every angle possible. That site does not provide it. Because that site doesn't provide it, if you're the builder, you wanna move it as close to twenty as possible. But I would say out of protection to those houses, I don't want it there. And it might impact their business a little bit, but to have it further back, but I think in due diligence to those residents, I don't want it right. I don't, you know, I don't wanna push it to the edge of the sea.
Yep.
And, and to push it up the edge is something that is, again, what you can't see are these houses on the other side that are here. And to have a gas station right across the street, I think to protect those houses, we do whatever the right action is that keeps it kinda where it is.
I don't see the benefit to the town for changing the zoning.
You know, I don't, I don't think I do either.
Well, but it might be you have more flexibility over keeping those trees from being cut.
Better to have, well, the, the ARB control exists regardless of the underlying stuff.
Do you have an ARB control over trees when on residential problem?
I think that's vague. We have, we have a landscaping plan requirement at the ARB. I don't think we have anything in the ARB that says.
I don't think you do either.
I, I didn't ask the ARB before I. I, I didn't ask the ARB before I cut down trees.
Yeah, I think you have more control, you may, you, I don't know the answer, but I think you may find you have more control over z- rezoning it commercial than you do leaving it residential. What you might end up with is le- leaving it uh residential.
And they just cut it down.
Be there, then they cut back all the trees and then the building suddenly looks much closer than it ever would have looked in the other place with the trees there.
And that was essentially what they said during their earlier, you know, application process.
But I'm going to say this again, the issue isn't the trees, it's the houses. I'm gonna, again.
Right, but we, sorry, go ahead Jim.
By looking at the, looking at the site from the houses, Dan.
Well.
And the trees, you're going to see it more.
Well, if you, if you look at it right now, again, if you were on that site, if you're there, if you're on that site of which we're all fairly familiar with that site, those trees do not make that much of a difference, honestly.
I mean, here's, here's.
It's, and, and it was just to finish it, I, I would like the trees to stay, but I think the bigger issue is the location of the building than it is the trees.
Okay.
And I.
I understand.
Just as a footnote to Dan's comment, like, if, they're going to have to submit a site plan anyway, whether we rezone it or not.
Yes.
And so, I think, so in other words, they can't cut down that screen of trees if we don't approve a, a plan that allows them to do it. I think I said that correctly.
I, I don't believe that's correct, so.
I don't, I don't either.
Well, I, I, that's good to know. So, so I'm not sure what we're approving that. Like, if they just cut down the trees.
You're trying, you're trying to make your, you're trying to have a consistent commercial development for a fancy gas station with a fancy food, sandwich food shop.
And Jim, while we've got you here and, and just given the, the history of this applicant with Albemarle County, are there any limitations to town councils' justifications for approving or not approving a change like this that's proposed?
Well, I mean, you, there's, I don't think you, you, I mean, I think, I think you can say, we're not going to approve it and then, then you may find they have the right to cut down all the trees. I don't know. I mean, I, I think they, I don't think you're regulating the ability of people in the town of Scottsville to cut down trees on residential lots. And that's what this is zoned for right now, right?
So, yeah, if, if we do rezone it commercial, then the traffic is a part of the site plan, whether or not the trees can't cut down?
Yeah, then, then certainly you can make it that, you can put, reach out and have jurisdiction over it. I mean, basically, the way it is now, the site plan, if you leave it residential, is not going to, what Matt's telling you, without Matt's zoning change, the site plan is not going to include the residential land. Right, Matt?
They, they still, they still own it. So they, they may still propose to be worked there. They just can't put their commercial building close.
That's what I'm saying. The commercial site plan is not going to include the residential land.
So I'm going to say, I'm going to say it one more time. It, to me, I'm more concerned with the location of the building than I am the trees.
Yeah.
And, and so, that being said, I would like to have the trees be there. But if it costs me the trees as to where the building is, I'm going to let the trees go.
But I think a lot of the issues with residents, I know it would be mine if I was a resident there, is how much of that building I'm seeing, how much of those lights are getting through and everything else. As a resident, what I want to see kept are the trees, so that it's kind of like a privacy fence almost between
Sure.
the, between the building and my, and my site, you know?
I, I totally agree with you. It's just that it's, it's tricky how to get both, so to speak.
Yeah, I guess that's where my, my confusion or question is in relation to the site plan, I think maybe.
Yeah.
Because I, it's un, it's unclear to, for a minute there, it sounded like the site plan doesn't matter, they can, they can cut down the trees and, and the screen regardless.
They don't need to offer a site plan on residential properties.
Okay. So if we make it, I see. So if we make it commercial.
We get a stronger control of it, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
We get the control over that. We get the closer building, but we get some control over the screen.
Right, although maybe.
This is important for your um engine floor, that, that we're starting with Shelby Preserve.
Yeah.
Only cut down and have to.
But I don't know that we do necessarily get a closer building, because it sounds like that's also part of the site plan.
That's what they want to, that, that's the reason they want to rezone it, so they can.
I know. And that's where it's sort of like weird, because it's like, yeah, I'll rezone your property, but you got to keep the building where it is.
Mr. Bowles, if we, if we, if we go commercial, is there a way to restrict the location of the building or is that lost?
Well, you can, you can make the trees stay there, I think. If it's, especially then if that gives you more solid ARB control, and my sense is that ARB has better controls, you know, I mean, u- under this, with treating it all as one project. Zach, you speak up, then if you have it split, so that the residential little strip there, the anomaly, I think that's the word, yeah, the anomaly here, is, is all by itself.
Yeah, we've not worked with a property like this before, um. But on the end, on the entrance corridor, I'm assuming that anything that's done on either of those properties falls under that purview, whether it's done commercial or village residential.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you've got, I mean, I, I haven't seen you been regulating trees in the town of Scottsville in my tenure.
Oh, you haven't?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't see any language in your ordinance to do that.
This, yes, Mr. Although we do, um, we have.
You requiring people to, to maintain trees that are historic and all this kind of stuff, that's pretty expensive stuff. And there's probably a lot of tree maintenance in Scottsville right now, Zach.
Yeah, historic trimming is very expensive and very rare skill. Uh, but we have, um, required landscaping on projects, especially when.
Landscaping is not, it's like the city of Charlottesville has, you know, ba- basically, you're, they're finding that they can do tree preservation of ordinances, but I don't think you have one. At least I haven't seen it.
Now, this is, this is more like um development regulation on their new construction, requiring the initial landscaping to be a certain.
Right. Right.
So, so going back to what's on here, just to say this one more time, a different way. The planning commission approved three to that we go commercial, but keep the twenty-foot buffer.
Yeah. Uh, uh, no.
No.
It's directly, directly.
The other. The twenty-foot buffer is not on valid, if that's what the.
Yeah, the other, that's right. The other thing they're asking for relates to the um, the back of the lot. Um. Where it's uh up close. Um, which I also, there's no neighbor issue there.
Yeah, I'm just really worried, I just, I, I just don't have a clear view to the best way to preserve a screen for the neighbors and to prevent the building from being on top of the road. It doesn't seem like either off, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm not seeing that either option presenting us with
Right.
Great choice.
Matt, what was that language that you had highlighted there about the preservation of, of trees in a site plan?
In the entrance corridor regulations, so the things that ARB is going to be looking at and can require, that if they, if they don't like the mass shape height and location of building instructions, we call it inappropriate. And, and don't approve it, and it can't be built. And ditto for landscaping, if uh, if it's if they're cutting down existing trees, it's not necessary for improvements, you said that's not appropriate.
And, and so this would be for ARB's review of that site plan?
You can't get a building permit until you do the MCA.
Yeah, but the site plan would not include the, the, the uh zone, land not zone commercial. That's the point I'm making, Matt.
Right, right. So, right, so you're, so what I'm hearing, I think I'm, I'm finding my way through this now, is that if we zone this whole thing commercial, then these requirements now come into play on the site plan.
You have better control of the unified sites.
Well, that's, that's what, I don't know if that's right or not, but that's what I'm beginning to think. It looks, I do know that if you, if it, then you, that, that if you don't do it, then, then the residential land is not part of the, of the site plan review. It's not part of the project. It won't be included in the site plan.
And, and we don't have the, the ordinance protecting
Well, I don't know what protection you have on the scenic ordinance, but I, I, again, that's why I keep saying, I don't think you're you're out there now regulating what the citizens of town of Scottsville can do as far as cutting trees are not as concerned.
That's right. Yeah, I've been policing tree cutting.
So I could go out there tonight and cut them all down if I owned it.
But it does seem that if they're, if they're submitting a site plan that may be a change to the existing land, our ordinance does give us the power to enforce it.
If, if, if the site plan includes the land, but if it doesn't, then you, you follow what I'm saying, Zach?
So if we, I do, I exactly do. So if we zone it commercial, now we have control. And whether or not the ARB has enforced our ordinance on trees in town as of yet is a moot point. The point is, the point is that we have the authority to do it. And so when they bring a site plan forward, we can talk about the existing trees and landscaping and what the appropriate changes would be, including the location of the building.
That is what my question is. So the site plan, I mean, just because we rezone it and that brings it closer, that doesn't mean the site plan has to be approved.
Doesn't mean if you go over the law anymore.
So back to the original point, yeah, we can, can make it commercial, but then say, maybe to say
But you can, right. What does, what, um, what control, if any, does the uh ARB have of the entrance corridor on residential land?
I'm assuming it's the same.
So you.
There's just the entrance corridor ordinance.
Yeah.
Falls all properties under their phone.
So does, to what extent is that going to preserve any view shed on that residential property then? Um, true. I mean, what, what?
That's what I'm trying to say, Stuart, that's what I'm saying. I don't think you've got any control over that residential property currently. That's why.
The entrance.
Cut down the trees if he wants to.
Right, but, but isn't it entrance corridor and doesn't the ARB have some control over what happens?
The interaction with the entrance corridor is triggered by the permitting process?
Yes, that's what you, thank you, Douglas.
Okay. If, if I had, if I had bought this house and wanted to live in
Yeah.
and didn't like these streets
Yeah.
and wanted to clear the view.
I could cut them down.
Okay, and regardless of fact, this is an entrance corridor.
That's right.
Because, right, there's no permit interacting with that ordinance.
It, it appears maybe to say this would be to support the recommendation by the planning commission probably makes the most sense because it gives us the most ability to input the site plan. And if we do that, if there's no guarantee on anything, but it does mean we have the ability to influence the site of the building and protect the trees. Theoretically at least. Is that correct, Mr. Bowles?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking it does. Matt, haven't they produced a lot of pretty pictures on this? Normally, when you have a development life piece for as long as it's been going on, they got a whole stack of little concept drawings. What, what's going on?
I, I don't have them on this hard drive, and even if I did.
I know, but you have them, right?
Yes.
It's just that you don't have them on this hard drive, but they're there, they're in your office, correct?
I'll, I'll send these right back around and, and they'll present them next week.
Okay.
I mean, don't you have them in book form or something like that, or plan form, or?
Mr. Mayor, one thing I must say to you, the nice thing is at least we've chosen the easy one for next week.
That's your Christmas present. Okay, any more discussion on this? Let's go on to parking.
Uh, the example language is, is real quick here, uh, so the page that's labeled, uh, safe work, the task page. Um, shows the existing ordinance text. Right now, we have a waiver from on-street, it's like off-street parking requirements in Valley Street, uh, on those historic buildings. Um, this request came from a couple of interested investors in Main Street buildings who see that the exemption doesn't apply on Main Street and makes it part of the vanity buildings like the old post office or the old bus station because of the parking requirements that kick in. Um, so it, uh, I, I think there's some common sense to applying the same kinds of parking exceptions on Main Street as Valley. Um, that was a four O recommendation from planning commission that we um treat the two angles of the historic district in the same way. It was that these buildings were, were built before there were large parking lot requirements and renovating them uh requires some flexibility.
So what kind of flexibility are they talking about? What does that mean?
If I, if I bought the post office and wanted to make a restaurant that had fifty seats in it, um, that would normally require, say, twenty-five parking spaces. There's not twenty-five parking spaces there. So I can't do a fifty-seat restaurant.
Ah, I see. So they could do a fifty-seat restaurant with fewer spaces, fewer parking spaces.
Yes. On the idea that there, in the historic district, the building's still a whole lot. You're never going to have a big off-street parking lot unless the town does it. So we're responsible for the public parking infrastructure, either on-street or off-street. And when someone buys a building and changes the use, they don't have to go over parking lot.
Got it.
Because you're knocking down historic buildings right in front of you.
Think that makes.
Zach, you might remember some of this conversation around the parking plan at the old bus depot when that was moving through ARB. It was a concern of his there, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions on parking? If not, item C, budget and compensation update, Matt?
Oh, um. Okay, I'm sorry, do you want to say anything? Your, uh, parking, this, uh, parking signage, should we still do the?
I just said, what I, what I will do, and y'all do it too, if you wander around town, just make a note, like there's no signage on the south side of West Main Street, so people are constantly parking in front of Kathy Meyer's place to pick up a dog or the so-called horse next door. Uh, you see a car parked there all the time. Same thing up by St. John's Church, you got uh no signage and if this, and people stop by the church to pick up things, leave things. And then you have a, a, a road to reader guy on the other side working at Thomas's house, and you got to negotiate your way around, there's no no, you know, in your, in your travels around town, if you say, well, this ought to have a two-hour parker, this ought to have a no parking on this side. Just make a note and we'll sort of compile our thoughts. And then we'll make a plan and put up some signs, maybe to help with the traffic flow.
You'll need a jackhammer for that, Mr. Matt. This is, this is the age of concrete. I think that ordinance for installing signs was back in the day, there were dirt roads.
Probably so.
Yeah, but I do, I do request that we be consistent. You know, they're like, do we treat Valley a certain way, or Main Street a certain way, or Valley and Main a certain way? So I think, I think where we've got ourselves in trouble now is we've kind of like may just place a two-hour parking, these not. And so I think it, it would be more helpful to just come up with something more comprehensive and consistent. And I think since we, since our last feedback from our police officers about enforcement, I think they've got like time to do a traffic check. Yeah, I know that was like an issue, you know, do I have time to like walk up, chalk tires, come back, you know, two or three hours later, just to see if anything's moved or changed? I think they've got the time to do it. And so, anyway, so I, so I feel like we have the capacity to enforce uh, or, or time parking. I think we have the capacity to do it. Um, I think we need to be consistent in how we do it, and we figure out maybe the right timeframes, when it's enforceable and that sort of thing, and we also need to consider residents, people who live in the apartments on Valley Street, so we just sort of think about them as well. But I just, as we move this conversation forward, I just think we should be consistent in how we apply it in the downtown area.
Okay. Last time?
I, I'm sorry, I, if I, if I may, um, I think you, you wanted some work session time for the other
Yeah.
I mentioned, I don't know if you're coming up in January. Um, you, you mentioned a community meeting. Um, I've asked for that a little bit on that, and um we've got enough interested citizens who work and have difficulty getting to these evening ones, but there was a pretty strong impulse for it being on Saturday.
Good.
So I've, I've got, um, January the fifteenth for that.
Good.
That does still give me enough time with the Martin Luther King holiday to digest the results of that.
Okay.
Um, and get, get some conditions ready. We'll have a time capsule work session like this on Monday before that. So council can brainstorm and, and start to chart across here are the conditions that you might want to do or where the census group is towards these special use permits. And we'll be able to share that to the community meeting and then fine-tune conditions or lay it one way or another, and then bring you that additional feedback.
Okay.
Chris and I are going to be real deliberate about extending invitations to a broad and diverse group of residents. Not everybody is comfortable speaking at the traditional public hearing. And there are gaps in the community of folks that we know we haven't heard from. So we're going to be deliberate about invitations to the open house to try to get the full range of things.
Okay.
I'm also aware of my own limitations as a facilitator on this, and sometimes it's hard to present the data and well-being at the same time. Planning commission has a, a council and budget um for advice, so I want to book some um facilitation help on this event. So I want to book some, um, facilitation help on this event, um, by a neutral, um, community organizer, um, to do that. So I've got some leads on that and got that book. We'll get some help on that one. Um, so we'll work on those invitations. Council's very welcome at this event. Um, we'll notice it as a public meeting, but try to give the floor primarily to the public, um, yes. Who are, we want to do something above and beyond the normal public. So that, so that said, where are you, where are you going to stand on conditions, what kinds of research do you want to do before next month? To help you be well-intentioned and thorough. We've got time, probably, we should have a word on that.
So, yeah, I would love to get something like this. In people's hands. Yeah, that's essentially what I put in an email, and this is just a little bit, this is something that, you know, did slightly different format where we could pass it out. People essentially could rank a series of, um, of conditions that we could add to the special use permit, from one to however many there are on there. And then we can, uh, we can collect them all and average them up and find out which ones flow to the top and which ones don't. And we've actually got some quantitative data to help us, um, judge the range of demand and the, the, and the, uh, the, the importance, relative importance of each of these things to a wide range of people. Um, gives us the ability to, to hear, uh, gives everybody an equal voice in, in, in giving us feedback on this. So, uh, and also there's a, a part on the bottom there where if you have an additional condition that you think you is important, you can add it in there and rank it in there as well, too. So what I'd love to do is be able to get this out to as many people as we can, have them fill it out, give it back to us. And then we can have that data with us when we start to look at, uh, ranking some of the things and what we want to put into the special use permit.
Cause I, I gave you the motions as made and approved by planning.
Yep.
They did a pair of two-to-one votes, um, to not manage with four conditions on one-on-one.
Right.
What is it, seven conditions on the, um, first reading? So you, we might find that those are too much, not enough.
Correct, and that's where I think this is going to help us. So all of the conditions that are in the recommendations that we got from the planning commission are in that document, as well as some additional ones that, you know, we've heard about as well. And, and the end provides the opportunity to add additional ones that they want. But at the same time, you have to rank all of it. You can't pick, you can't rank them all one.
One of the things, Matt, I would, I would say, Stuart, probably, I mean, I'm favorable to them as they are. And the thing that I would say that I have found is that there's misunderstanding in the community about terms. For example, large-scale development is considered, at least from what I understand, large-scale development would be fifty or more things, fifty more units on one site. This is two sites. So this is not large-scale development, and from how I understand it. So to use the term, to call it large-scale development is a misuse of a term. So I think the community misunderstands what large-scale development is. The secondary thing is, I think also the comprehensive plan of the town clearly conditions something like this. So in other words, people will say that it doesn't, but it absolutely is wrong to say that. This, the comprehensive plan of the town absolutely, clearly, this, these both of these developments fit clearly in the the conference. So I say to the town councillors, when you, when I, I've heard in the community, people will say that it doesn't, that's just inaccurate. So, so in other words, when people say that these developments don't fit the conference, that's just not, that's not actually correct. And, and so the, and the other one too, large-scale development, these are not, this, this, these would be small to medium scale development. The two separate developments and, and again, if, if people out in the community are told this is a large-scale development, that's going to skew their view or their understanding. That's not what this is.
And.
That's factually incorrect in terms of the issue of development. So, so I'm simply saying that the reason I stand for this is I, I go back to what I said before. I think we have to think about the future of the town. We have to think about young people. We have to not be mired in where we have been for three, two or three years on this. And if the young, the youngsters of the town, those, they're appreciate the silliness of my mass, so to speak. We, we forget about that. We, we, we have to create a future for them. And, and so I, I will just say that I think the, the nuts and bolts of the plan, certainly Stuart, we need more input and more adjustments in terms of how do we fine-tune it? But the, the, the concept itself, we as a town haven't built any, it, it's the, the research of families who try to find a place to live here, that it's, they can't, it's not here. And without development, without these two sites adding housing to our housing stock, we simply are killing the town. You just look at the census, we've lost population. I mean, we literally lost population when most of the country's gained population. Like, what is, what, what has happened at Scottsville that we're actually losing population? How did that happen? And so if you understand where we're going, what's happening with real estate, I think we really do want to care about people who live in the town and want to be sensitive to all viewpoints. If we're not able to, to think about the future, I guess, for me, the whole reason I am on this council is about the future. It's not about who cares about the other things. Who cares what? I, I'd rather go do other things. But if, but if you think of young families, younger people, the future of this town has always been about that. It's always been. That's why people came here in the seventeen hundreds, eighteen hundreds. So I, I would just simply say to you, I think the reason these are good ideas isn't
Yeah.
the traffic flow, isn't the issue of, doesn't add too many bodies, we need to have them here. And so I, I am simply saying in a strong way, I support this. And I thank you, Matt, for your research there, Stuart, and I think it's great. We need to get more community input. We've had a lot of community input for several years. And no matter what we do, there'll be various voices that will be against it, I understand that. And they have every reason to express their opinions and they have every reason to express them to each one of us or to dozens of collective council. But we need to move forward. It's time to move forward and to, and to make this happen.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you. And, and part of this special use permit is, is mitigating the effects of the increased density here.
Sure.
And I know what a few people think. I'm very, very clear on what a few people think. I don't know what the majority of people in, in the town think. And then I would, would like, I think it's, would be irresponsible of me to vote without having a better sense of what the town wants, and that's really what this is.
And I do like the rank ordering idea, um, cause like, cause the conditions, I guess, there, there are two couple that I have questions about, cause otherwise, you know, the density is appropriate. It's consistent with what's nearby, you know, both at the Upper Bird Street Lot and the Pine Street. Pine Street's half acre, neighboring sites are half acre, the Upper Birds, point three seven acres. The houses on Harrison and Page vary between a half acre and less. So it's coming out at the same, point four four acres is what over there on average. And so that all feels good to me. And I think the planning commission's like done their homework to answer questions about congestion issues or traffic issues. Um, so I, I feel good about what's in front of us. The only thing that I'm still on the fence about terms of conditions or what was approved related to the HOA on Upper Bird is the trail system.
Yeah.
Um, because I know the HOA is necessary to keep the infrastructure in place so that we've got water and all that stuff, and a sidewalk that's going to get up there in a row. I think my concern, because I support trails in town, but I can't, I don't want the HOA to do anything more than it absolutely has to. Simply because I don't want to create a division politically between the town and the HOA.
Well, that's a problem with the HOA. They have their own entry with their own governing bodies and their own rules that gay as a town have zero control. Once an HOA comes in, they make up their rules, how they want the houses to look, how they want the sidewalks to look, how they want this to run, how they want that to run, what the dues is going to be and everything else. And they say, like, we have no say whatsoever in that.
Yeah.
We, we can't, you know, work with them and say, this is how we want you guys to run, we want you to have them limited. A homeowners association, homeowners, so do you. And they, they have all the same, and everything that happens just in their development. ARB will mean nothing to a homeowners or owners association, any of that. So you have to be careful letting a homeowners association into a store town like this, because we will lose all control when it's not of that section.
Now, one, one alternative to requiring putting a park in there or putting trails in there is to have the developer put in X amount per lot or some percentage of the total development cost into a town verification fund, which then allows us to use that money
Right.
for whatever we want to.
Stuart, Stuart, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry, I'm picking on you. You can't, these are the old ideas with proppers. Can't do a cash proper requirement anymore. Almark County used to have one and they did away with it. And if you try to do it, all it's going to happen is that the developer is going to say, well, that's fine, you put it in there. You pass it as a condition, he just goes into court and it's overturned and he still gets his, his zoning approved.
Ah, okay, thank you.
So, proppers are no longer the way they used to be ten years ago.
Okay.
Changed completely.
So what?
Now they have to be completely voluntary.
What should be?
I know.
What should be our rule of thumb on conditions? What appropriate strings can we put on this developer to condition the impacts that we know come from and all?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, you're going to have to quantify directly the impact that the development um, places on, on the need for whatever you're requiring him to do. And that's a lot, that's pretty easy to do if you've got a five-hundred unit, uh, subdivision. Um, I mean, you can say, well, we, it's going to, it's going to generate X number of children, we're going to need a new school, da-da-da-da-da. We're not interested in that kind of density here. But at this level of density, it's real, it's really, it's, it's a hard task to really quantify something that's going to be enforceable.
Mr. Bowling, a question for you in that regard. I know having lived in Loudoun County before and seen massive projects happen quickly, thankfully, it is highly unrealistic to think that's going to happen here. However, is there a way to quantify this, the timing of how the development would come in? Can you say the maximum amount in a year or two?
Well, no, this, I mean, I don't see how you do that in this kind of sized project. It's so minute, really. You sized it, it's, it's a very small project.
Sure, well, that's.
How do you size it?
The, the reason I ask that as a question is, I mean, there's a practical side where a developer is going to inspect something, and they're only going to do what they think is reasonable in terms of their timing and the permits and all that they have to do to make it happen. But, on the other hand, I mean, there's residents have a legitimate concern, you know, are we putting fifty houses in next week? You know, that's a legitimate concern.
Yeah, well, fifty, fifty houses are not going to happen next week. Well, I don't, I haven't seen any fifty-house proposal. The ones I have are, what, hey, what are the numbers we're talking about here?
Thirty-six and eighteen.
Eighteen and thirty-six, that's what I saw. It was the fifty.
I'm using the number, in other words, what I'm trying to say is, it's.
Forty-eight was what was applied for, thirty-six was the condition on, on it from planning.
Okay, I see.
It's a terrible concern if, if, for example, there were these developers that were going to have, you know, working twenty-four hours a day and, and put the lights out there so we could get these fifty houses built like that. It's just not going to happen. I guess what I'm saying is, if we look at it in a timeframe, it's going to take, I don't know, what's, is it three years, five years? I mean, it's, it's not going to happen.
Now, I've, I've been here, what, over ten years, and I haven't seen any developments.
That's my point.
Exactly the point.
That's why I was saying, let's build a new house, let's build one.
One, so one every ten years. So at that rate, you would, you would have quite a, it would take you what? That's eight times thirty-six, that's, that's a long time.
That's kind of what I'm asking the question. What's the, what would be, again, taking the other side's perspective, what would be the fastest we could see, is it five years that you'd take fifty?
I'm about, I'm about a developer, I mean, that's a guess, but it, it, it depends upon the quality of the houses, how big they are. Mostly depends upon the M-A-R-K-E-T. I mean, what, what's the market going to support?
Take it both extremes, it's a hot market, it's.
I'll, I'll give you the type of concern on a, on a commercial construction. That's, that's a, that's an experienced builder who has done these before, and they are growing business and they wanted to open this thing quick. And they got their special use permit approval last December. And they are now al- almost ready to submit a site plan. It took them a year to do their engineering and draw their site plan. Engineering and design takes a year. Even when the company is highly motivated and wishes they were in this facility. So I can give pretty good assurance because engineering is slow and engineering review is slow. That if council approves something tomorrow, there would be no groundbreaking for a year. Because engineering can't go faster than that.
Sure.
And then, and then you've got the complexity, you, you can't even get a surveyor anymore. You know, everything's gotten so, such short supply, but you really get down to the nitty-gritty when you start trying to get building materials.
No, thank you. That, again, that's my point. My point is, it takes time. And the time is a factor that isn't always apparent when you say, okay, this many houses are coming in. This many houses are going to, I've been on this council eleven years and I, we haven't done anything. Like, I mean, we haven't allowed anything to happen and we've needed to. We've known all along, this is needed to happen. We have not, however, we've not been in a position for a while where it actually could happen.
But you haven't had the market that was, that was interested in building here, too. And you still don't have the market that's interested. I mean, I haven't seen one built yet.
Well, we don't have the, yeah, the zoning. Yeah, the houses are selling, I'll tell you that much. Houses that have gone on the market down here have sold inside of a month over the last two years.
That should encourage, I mean, you would think they would encourage some of the, of the bill, the land you have to develop.
Yeah, it's decidedly encouraging, um.
Jim, I, I will keep closely in touch about this condition content and show you that. I think it's important that any conditions that council is discussing and we show the public having a detailed review first.
Yep.
That we not approve something that then probably gets sued because it's been violated somewhere else.
Yeah, because one of the things I, I want to say, and I, as Zach said this well, we want to have full public conversation, but we don't want misinformation. And we don't want to have happen what happened to one of our other town councillors. I mean, this should be a free, open, friendly conversation, even if people see things differently. Should not be nasty, should not be anything. And, and we in good faith, all live in the same town, I've gone anywhere. And by, by being here, trying to do what makes the most sense to people, we welcome people to come and share their opinions strongly, not strongly, whatever. But at the same time, we want to have voices, this, this is the other thing, just being honest. There are voices who want to speak here who are afraid to speak here. And they're afraid to speak here because they know what just happened. So we, we have silence on some voices who would like to speak, but aren't able to speak because they know what's just happened in our community, and that to me is reprehensible. So, all that to say, we want to be conducive and allow voices to to be able to die on, this is just a long process, it's a long procedure, and we want to do it right. And I think, I think Zach, one of the things you were saying is this process should be, like, we're not trying to speed it up and slow it back, we just want it to happen accurately. Want it to be the right, the right process, the fair process, and honest process. I, I am curious, though, I mean, I know that the, um, let's go back to the HOA comment. I, I am interested in just sort of understanding that better. Cause I know that you have to have, you know, we want homes, if we want homes built, then you have to have this thing to like, get it moved. So you can't have one without the other. And so, I guess I'm just curious, like, how does this look in other locales? Like, I know there are HOAs inside Almorel County, there are HOAs inside Charlottesville, so like, for neighborhood associations, but that's different. Um, so it just doesn't work. What powers does an HOA have inside of town that, that we need to be aware of? And perhaps need to be part of what we put into this?
Well, I mean, it's, it's not that complicated. An HOA is no different than having two people who live in a duplex and share a common space. They have common rules for sharing their common space.
Yeah.
There's no requirement that you have an HOA. There's, there's no legal requirement. There's no requirement that you have an HOA. There's, there's no legal requirement that you have one. Basically, at some point, you, you end up, developers ending up, end up setting them up because it's easier to get bank loans for people that the developer wanna sell the houses to. And it's also easier to dump all the homeowners, the the storm ordered detention basins and this and that and the other, the various things that are expensive to maintain and the developer wants to get in and get out. But you find an HOA developing, it's, it's a, it's, it's, you wanna call it, it's no different. It's any sort of of common ownership where you've got more than one owner and how they share their space. You've got an HOA situation down in the, the county apartments. You might need the county rents or who, who's renting the apartments for this?
P-Mont Housing Alliance.
P-Mont, well, they have rules and regulations and they have a residents council and so forth. And that's the general process that you go through.
There's a basketball court in there that I can't just use any more time. So I think a distinction there is in this process, what parts of this property does the town take people control of?
Right.
If we, if we get a trail easement as part of this deal, we assure public access. And that's different from Lake Monticello where there's all kinds of trails and public facilities that not just anybody can use.
Right.
So.
And, and the developer may be interested in giving you a trail easement as an amenity to sell his units. I don't know. You'd think he would be.
Okay, but that's a valid point, Zach, going back to what you said, the way you said it there, Matt, too, is we're trying, if we create ultimately some type of network of trails, the Emerald Neckles, we want it to be, can't walk over here because it's privately owned. I mean, that, again, that is gonna happen in some places like a scam, it's a property, they control their properties. But we are going forward with the development, trying to minimize anything that would exclusive from these people or not.
I hear, I hear fewer, fewer gates is what we want. And there, and there may be a maintenance obligation related.
Because what's in it right now is that we get a public easement on trails built inside the development.
And Mr. Bowling, what you're saying is, is that we can't require it, but they could certainly give it if they wanted to. The developer.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a subtle dance you go through. You can't say, well, let you have it, but we want you to dedicate a a hundred foot wide trail to give to the town of Scottsville. Of course, that's an exaggeration. It's just a footpath, right? And it's part of a continuation. In other words, the trail goes right up to the development and then you're asking them to dedicate it for the future. But it has to be voluntary on the behalf of the developer. I don't think you can require that the trail be given to you as a condition of zoning. Do you, Matt?
I have, I, I think I have to connect it to a legitimate public policy goal. So on my native plants one, the town has set six ways from Sunday that biodiversity and bees are all very important to us. So I have, I have a good reason to require that the landscaping be only from the native plants guy.
Right, but, but how about trail easement? Is there a trail that runs right up to this property?
We've got, we've got a sidewalk system that we know we want more connections to. And we've got a mobility plan in our comp plan that says that these are the goals we want. So we're gonna require that they improve sidewalks and that they connect them to ours. And I, I don't wanna walk out too far on a plank, but I think the comp plan has legitimate goals for we've set all kinds of different ways we wanna be walkable. And it'd be irresponsible for us not to connect this project to that goal.
Right, well, so call it, instead of calling it a trail easement, which ties into your park system, you're calling really what you're talking about are sidewalks or foot trails, or at least a dedicated easement for that in the future.
Both. Blenheim, Blenheim has a trail, Bird Street has a sidewalk, and then Bird Street has required open states, which is in the zoning. And I think the applicant has done a good job of drawing an open space with some amenities that, that we like. But the amenities are on them. That's all that matters.
But they've already offered.
Is this something, this is something the developer's offering to do, is that correct?
Yes, I think their drawing of the site concept goes above and beyond our area.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to ascertain. Where you're, it's sounding better.
But then, Matt, on this thing, we have crossed out the town except to meet its responsibility. We probably restored that, right?
Planning commission wasn't sure what kind of budget obligation they wanted to make of the town.
Got it.
So they, they hedged on this wording of, yes, the easement will be prepaid. But then what will the arrangement be to maintain the trail then?
Just say for a future, for a future trail or something like that. So it puts, you know, then you can leave that, kick that issue down the road, like the maintenance issue.
I'm on one thing to some extent.
I see. Got it, got it.
All right. Anything else on that? Item C.
Thank you. And this is a staffing and budget update. I wanna share through a couple of other positions and principles before talking about myself. Happy to be at your open session, but if you, if you want to go closed session, I'm just stopping. And we'll do that. Performance evaluations and compensations in contracts can be closed session, but it doesn't. I, I mean, you've seen job turnover concerns and all kinds of issues, all over the news. We have seen a little bit of that here. We're, we're one position down on our police department and have had very little luck with police recruitment. Our salary range is significantly less than where our neighbors are with public safety staffing. And we're limited on that because of where our chief's salary tops out. Chief Jenkins is coming on at fifty-two thousand dollars with no benefits. That's a substantially higher salary than where Jeff Olmec was. But that was what Mayor agreed on with the hire and is well supported in our budget. So we have the authority to hire at that level. Also existing in our current budget is the reclassification of the maintenance worker back to that full-time job. We've seen that the workload is there and especially the things like extra contract management, project management, procurement, I need that out. So we called for that in our, our budget. I'm ready to make that change.
Would that be our current maintenance guy?
Yes. In recruiting for the town clerk, I'm advertising a little bit higher pay range than what we advertised three years ago. That works out to about a ten percent increase in the range. I don't know that the new clerk will start at a higher pay than where our clerk is now. I've only gotten a couple of applications on that. This is the hardest administrative recruitment that I've ever seen. And I had previous jobs where the only thing I did was recruiting. I've never had so much difficulty recruiting an administrative professional is what I'm seeing. And part of the problem is the, the range for this one is just a little bit lower than where I'm at myself. So we've got this like compression problem all the way through where we can't hire a police officer competitively because our chief is right above them. And we can't hire a clerk competitively because your administrator is right up there. So I, I, I did a real quick salary study and my peers in small towns, and I found one that was lower than where we were. And eight that were higher, ranging from Brookneal in Campbell County to Zee Six Thousand. Middleburg is one of the wealthiest communities in the country. And they're at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand for, for six hundred dozens. But there's a fair number of sixty and seventy thousand dollars more time measures. And all that's to say, we have this compression, we have money in our budget. But I, I think that we need to make these adjustments. But police chief one, we can do it competitively within that budget. But I can't raise funds on salary. I'd be happy to commit you to a contract adjustment and lock in for the next three years or a year before returns and the council will sit here and get some salary flexibility that I can use to hire the rest of our staff competitively.
So what, what are your recommendations?
Gosh, that's what I'm saying. I'd like to be between Brookneal and Ash.
Perk for administrator.
And take some brush for the clerk and
One of the things that's happened unfortunately is the world of COVID has dramatically changed the workflow in so many different ways. Matt, a question for you. Would you say it's not more people, more people retired and just not coming in? What's, what's the?
Yes, in, in, among my colleagues, many of my peer managers retired, like they got through the crisis work and then retired. And they retired five or ten years sooner than they would have of us.
Yeah, we, we, I've seen in our industry, just a dramatic, I mean, it's, it's happened everywhere, but I mean, people retire and, and it's it's really changed the paradigm. Some years ago, when we were, I can't remember, Ron, if you were on the council at the time, but it would have been around the time we hired George. Were you on that? You were on that? I mean, we, we could have had any resume we wanted back then, so to speak. And in, in other words, it's just, it's just a different world. And right now, it is the supply is short. That's the long and short of it. And the, and the money, the costs are higher, the pay, the pay is higher. Thank you for bringing this up. I think we're gonna look to you and to our government services. Yeah, I mean, to look at, to give us some recommendations.
My, my question is for Matt, sort of like the long-term outlook on these raises, because I know our, we have talked about a local property tax and other things because we, we keep coming up against we wanna do things, we wanna fix parks, that, I'd really like to fix the packet boat. Wood's getting pretty soft. And, you know, pay and, and all these other things, maintaining trails. Now, we just don't seem to have enough money in the coffers to do it. And we don't have businesses in every storefront on Valley Street yet, turnover of people or meals tax yet. So anyway, so I'm just curious, sort of like what the forecast is. Where, if we make these changes now, five years out, where does that put us in terms of our annual budget?
Yeah.
And like what money we need to sustain competitive pay too, because you make these changes. But then you also need to like guarantee an increase, you know, or, or health insurance costs go up or whatever it happens to be.
Yeah, we've, we've, our, our pattern on compensation has mostly been, we keep the benefit structure the same. And so we, we eat whatever the increase is on health insurance or VRS contributions. Those might be three, four, five percent increases in any way. And then we make that up on salaries. So because the benefits cost went up, the salary increases on that. We haven't given across the board increases more than three percent in the past three years. It's been two, three percent. Those have been pretty small. It's hard to get out of that kind of behavior. So this feels like sort of a one-time adjustment on police chief, maintenance, clerk. Then we have a baseline and administrator. I think we're going to continue to have a problem, just like you said. Where you have to split your funding between, you know, you've got this much revenue growth and you want a lot of the growth of project work. And you really wanna maintain a good benefits package. And so salaries are all this thing. So I expect that problem to continue. And you make up, you make the best offering you can to staff of, here's your good supplies budget so you can go do good work. And it's still gotta be retention with health insurance, but I can only get you a two to three days. And that's, honestly, I think that's the trap we're gonna continue to roll.
You know, I, I know I'm reverting on this, but that's actually something we've, we've talked about and I'm just gonna say this, this goes back to the issue of the houses in the town. One of the things that I think has dramatically changed this issue is very different now in COVID, that given this change in how people see opportunity, where a town like Scottsville in the past was viewed one way, it's not viewed that way anymore. I mean, it's changed where a place like Wintergreen, where nobody was there in the off-season, everybody's there in the off-season. I mean, it's the, the way that society is functioning and shifting and changing and it's changing demographic issues. Scottsville needs to be in a position to adjust to that. And if we don't make this change, we're not going to be, so we're simply. And so, so in other words, just the same thing that we're seeing here, the same dramatic changes that have dramatically changed my industry that's flipping this over. I have a master's of public administration also. That's my background. Although I'm not the skilled person out of the madness. That being said, as we see the fruition of all this worked out, we've got to make adjustments to keep that in mind. And if we don't do that, we leave our businesses in a bad place, we leave our community in a bad place, and we deal with these issues. So in other words, if you think of, of adjusting, where, where, where are we gonna be? How are we gonna pay for people in the future? How do we pay for more staff? How do we take care of the funding we need? That, that basically means you have to grow. And if you don't grow, you die. And so if we were in a place where we've lost population, which we have, obviously we haven't done, obviously there's something about our town that pushed people away. And we need to change that. And again, the paradigm is just dramatically, I mean, the sociological changes that are happening as a result of this, the society we're coming out of is not the same. It is just absolutely not the same. And then I don't think we see it here in Scottsville as dramatically as they see it in large cities. But it's gonna be here. And, and I, I see it because I see it in lots. I've worked with all around the country and it's dramatically different. But I think that's, we're living in an old paradigm. In fact, Matt, I think what you're saying is wouldn't you say in your years of experience, the change in this has just happened quickly? I mean, what we're talking about has happened very quickly in terms of the, the, the changes in even, even this type of career, like you said, people stepping out of it or, or what that does. It's, it's rapid change.
Forty-year managers saying twenty, twenty will solve the issue.
And they're done.
Yes.
And, and so those people in the past were in the job market and were available. They're not now. And so when you lose, so that's what I'm saying is those changes are all over the place. And so that being said, we have, we as a town have to be nimble and adjust. And part of that adjustment, again, goes back to that other discussion we were having. It's, it's not the same conversation we've had up until two years ago about houses and things. This is a different world. And this different world means we need to act. So anyways, I come back to, to you. Thank you, Matt, for bringing this to our attention. We do need to act on this also. And Simon Thomas, we're sorry that you're a casualty of this.
I think Thomas will be all right.
I like to think it's not a casualty. It's the moving after opportunity.
Thank you very much. I would just say, in, in general, I support the more competitive pay. I feel like it's a fairer pay.
Yep.
And I'm gonna say competitive again. And so my, my remaining question though is, is how do we pay for it? Because I know we've got federal money and that's gonna get tied up as projects coming up and, you know, pay, and then that's gonna run out. And so what's the long-term plan? And I know that we were planning to use government services individually to just talk about like the budget and things like that. So when, I'm hoping we're still planning to have those, correct? Okay, so when we do that, I think it would be helpful if this was part of that conversation too. I just sort of say like, here's another, you know, it's just, give me a scenario where all the money's being spent, you know? So that we can just talk about how we can best position ourselves to sustain something like that if we can. I'm also looking at the population numbers next to this, next to this pay, you know? And in order to get seventy thousand dollars, you got two thousand people, it looks like, you know? So that's another, just like sticking point for us in terms of our capacity. And that's what I wanna know. What is our capacity for?
I mean, we're the town, this one twenty-seven with six hundred.
Loudoun County's got a lot of cash. A lot of cash up there. Lot of money, lot of money.
What's the wealthiest county in the country?
Right, so. There's also a huge, I remember this from the, the peer community study. I believe that's the one that has the, is it the Salamander Resort, Matt?
Yeah.
That, you know, has a, a probably hundred seat, a hundred table restaurant that's, you know, Michelin starred thing and a big resort. So they're getting a huge amount of meals, tax and business license from that development.
Well, it's, it's Fox country up there.
Matt, is this a matter that will be forwarded to the government services committees?
There, there are tomorrow.
And meeting Wednesday, fourth, uh, tomorrow.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and thank your audience for being here tonight. And we'll see you again next week.
Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.